I'd like to call the work session for the Coffee County Board of Education on January 21st, 2016 to order. Could we get an adoption of the agenda?
I believe we adopt the agenda as written. Second.
All those in favor? Dr. Leece, would you like to do our invitation, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good idea. Father, we thank you for that many blessings. We just give you praise and we're thankful to be here tonight to be able to do the work of our children and our county and all the stakeholders here in our community. And we just are so grateful to have this opportunity to do the business of the school system. We just ask that you guide and direct us and watch over our children as they attend our school. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
First item on the agenda for the work session tonight is selection of 2016 Board of Education officers. And before we start our business, though, I did have a note here from my special note of thanks from the Walker family. And I thought I would read that into the record here for the board members tonight. But it said, "With sincere appreciation for your kindness, dear Dr. Leece and Coffee County Board of Education members, it is hard to find words to express the gratitude my family feels from the honor and kindness you have shown by naming the new ag building after our father. Groundbreaking ceremony was truly a blessing. Look forward to attending the ag events in the future. Sincerely, the Walker family." I thought it was really nice.
And we're glad we could do it.
Yep. Go ahead.
The selection of the Board of Education officers. We put this on the work session agenda. If you read our policy, it says that the Board Chair will be installed at the first regular monthly meeting. So we thought we would go ahead and have the discussion here and then we placed it on the regular meeting to do the official vote at. If you want to, it really had the pleasure of the Board, however y'all want to do this, but...
I make a motion. We're gonna do it that way with you. I make a motion that Adam not be chairman of Justice, y'all will be vice chairman.
I say that. All those in favor?
All right. Congratulations.
I love it.
Y'all can go ahead and move into your positions or just sit right here.
You just come on over here.
Yeah, we're going to do it. You gotta sit by him. Mr. Gerald, the good thing about a chair is you can't charge your father.
Thank you. I guess we need to change names, too.
I'm gonna take you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerald, I gotta come in. I've had things learned for a great job. I think she handled meeting great. And I think she conducted the meeting possible. And I want to congratulate you on what you did, a great job.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate that.
I'd like to add to that, too, and say I appreciate the job you've done this year. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve this capacity this year. I think since I've been on here, we've had some really good leadership. And I think that's part of the reason that we've been as successful as we have over the last few years, you know? And so there's an expectation there. And I hope that I meet that, not only can look for it, but for the school system. So like I say, I appreciate the job you've done. And like I say, the leadership overall since I've been here has been very good.
One more thing, Mr. Gerald. I have a lot of people asking me why I don't want to sit in that seat. I don't want to sit in that seat. I want to be part of a team. That don't go to my ear. I want 75,000 kids to be the best system possible. So I don't never want to be the chairman. I just want to be part of the team.
We appreciate that you did, Mr. Gerald.
Thank you. It ain't like y'all put me out or nothing like that, because I want to get that straight, too. I chose not to do that for a lot of reasons.
I know last time I tried to lump it, but I felt got put out. I would like to say thank you, Ms. Gerald, for your leadership this past year. And you have taken the board to the highest level of achievement on the GSBA recognition program, exemplary board under your leadership. And as chairman, Madam Chairman, you've taken us to the greatest heights we've been on their recognition program. So thank you.
One more thing, and I'll quit.
Well, thank you, because it took all of us.
It's a team, though. Now, Ms. Clayton, Ms. Jow is here when I was chairman. They know why I don't want to be chairman. Put them to the side, that team.
Well, since I taught Adam in, what was it, sixth grade? I think I've done a good job. At least two, Adam.
All right. Review of the minutes from the previous meeting, the minutes on eBoard and we've had access to them. Were there any comments or questions about the minutes from the previous meeting? If there's no changes requested, we'll place those on the consent agenda at the regular monthly meeting following this meeting. Monthly financial report. You'll find the monthly financial report on eBoard and also in your packet, if you have a packet. You'll see that our end of month fund balance for December is $9,537,480.36. If you go to the document where we have a comparison of month over month and year over year, you'll see that we're pretty consistent where we've been over the last few years. If you go to the monthly detail report, you'll find the percentages and collections and expenditures. Mr. Graves, do you want to provide any insight into that report? Is there any comments you want to make or point out?
Local taxes were about $200,000 in shot of what we had been projecting for December, but there were some issues with some accounts they had in their systems there at the tax office. There should be some catch-up of that in January here.
How much was it?
Couple hundred thousand.
Is that all the 1220 and 1990?
That would be about it. I guess the only other thing of note, and Mr. Preston sent some emails around about it, with TAPT. There's some question coming as far as where that's going to come in going forward because of the excess collections that were made during the past year that could come back to bite us. The state, they paid us in excess, all the counties in the state of Georgia, about $68 million, I think it was, from what I remember reading. And if that happens, that excess has to be pulled back to the state and they do it by reducing the percentage. The percentage was supposed to go up to 46 percent and it's going to drop to about 40 and a half this next year. So we'll have to see how that plays out. Plus, the legislators could come around and make changes to how that calculation's being done as well during this session. So we'll just have to keep an eye on that. Okay, have any out there, Mr. President? You could be talking about $100,000. We projected about $1,001,001 of TAPT money. If it backs up that much, you know, of course, it depends on how much activity there is as far as car buying within the county as well. That's going to be a reflection. That's pretty difficult to predict, obviously. But just in base of those percentages, it would equate to somewhere around $100,000 or so.
Was this just a miscalculation on the state's part, too? Or was there...
No. What they're saying is that some counties were having a very good year in terms of car selling, car sales. And, you know, you would expect that those larger metropolitan areas are, you know, if the economy's good, there's a lot of car sales going on. So in dispersing those funds, they dispersed them as the formula indicated they had to, which was about 43 percent, I think 42, 43 percent last year. That money was coming back to the county to be spread out amongst the city, the county and the school systems within each of the respective areas. But when they came down to it, there's a watermark that they hit and they exceeded it by $68 million last year. So the state's obviously going to try to take that money back.
They knew they needed it. They knew they needed it.
Yeah.
Now, is that, you had, I might owe you $100,000. But is that $100,000, is that our part of it or is that county, city and school?
No, that would be our part. That would be our project based on those percentage shifts that we're looking at.
All right.
Mr. Gerald Johnson. Thank you. Dr. Leece?
Yes, sir.
Is the state going to send us some money back?
Well, the governor has said that he's going to put $300 million additional dollars into education in the FY17 budget. There's not been a clear indication of how that money will be inserted, whether it's into the teacher's salary schedule or whether it's into the austerity. Assuming it's going to come to us as a reduction of the austerity. And if that happens, we currently have as a state $466,769,466,769,851. So 4.6, 460 million basically in austerity as a state. So if they insert $300 million back into K-12 funding, that's 64 percent. So if we take 64 percent of our $2,296,730 locally, that comes out to $1,469,907. So we could be looking at $1,404,000 in additional funding for next year that would come in the form of, or return of austerity.
Would that be June 30th or July 1st?
It would be July 1st. It would be in next year's money.
One more question, Mr. Gerald. If you can check, Dr. Leece, can you pull up the general account, physical year fund by the year?
Which one was that?
The first one, the general account, physical year. First document you put out. You got, that's it. Dr. Leece, where would that money go in that, in that file?
It would go into cash balance.
Cash balance. Would it go in the general fund?
It would.
Is that not the money that he was saying that he used for 3 percent pay raises for the teachers?
Well, he has said that possibly 3 percent pay raises, that was mentioned, reduction of furlough days, because I saw, run out today, I think there was roughly, I forget what it was. Did you see that number? There's maybe 15...
68 counties are still...
68 counties that still have furlough days. So I think when they send it, it's going to be up to that county to decide how it's used. But yes, ma'am, he has mentioned clearly...
So the county's that...
...raises for teachers. But I think it's going to depend on which county it is. I talked with superintendent earlier this week who said he still has two furlough days in his system, so...
But if your system isn't, like we are, we don't have any more furlough days, so we could use that money. In fact, I thought that he even said that he was going to have some kind of committee or whatever to ensure that that money was used for teacher salaries.
Yeah. All that's still kind of in the making. It's none of that, it has to go before the legislator and they have to approve his budget.
Well, I know they have to approve the budget, but I guess I just, I really thought that's what I had understood or inferred from the article that's been sent out.
Yeah, that's what they're proposing. So, you know, the best way they could do it would be to put that money into the TNE for each system and send us that money and also reduce the austerity. Ideally, that's what would happen. They would insert enough money into the TNE for every teacher in the state and then also reduce the austerity. That would be the best thing for those 60-some-odd systems that still have furloughs. That way, they could give a teacher raise and they could balance the budget. So that's going to be the challenge for systems and including us. I mean, I think that's a challenge for every system.
My understanding that he wouldn't give everybody 3 percent raise from that number and gives that 1.4 million right here. We want to give with 2 or 3 percent for the kids. That's my understanding of it.
I did think there were two separate pots of money. The one for the, for the new funding formula. And then if we had a million, was deliberately to give teachers the...
I would hope, hopefully that's the case.
Even though he's not running again.
Looking at, if K-12, there's a little over $300,000 million included in there. It's not a combination of $300 million for this 3 percent or the state's salary schedule. And then the other piece for reducing the austerity.
So it's just the one and it's inclusive of the money that could be used for...
And I just read an article a week ago. Part of this budget is also to include a $100 increase in premiums to go to about $850 per month for classified employees at schools, which the state gives us some help for. It just went to $746 this month for school systems. That last $150 started and now they're going to, they're proposing going up another $100 on that premium to school systems. That's another $1,200 a year.
Maybe it's time to look for another insurance carrier.
Guys, they're coming home, man. Insurance carrier. You doing a good job? Please, Will?
Yes. GSBA does a great job.
The good news, I would say the good news on all that is we are going to see additional funding. And that's great news. And just how much is yet to be seen. And that's our estimate based on the amount we say we're putting back into the code. We'll see.
Got any idea what 3 percent would cost the system?
Yes.
Put it out there.
Including benefits, it would be something in the neighborhood of about $1,003, $1,004. That's for everybody, not just teachers. It would be $1,001, little over $1,001 for teachers on salaries.
How big for that?
Give to me.
I think that's, that's open for me.
First thing I want to say, Dr. Leece, you and your staff, y'all managed to get a budget when things were looking right. Because I was saying to myself, now, I don't know where we're going to do that. We made it.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you for doing that. That's our job, make sure that budget is right. We got to look out for taxpayers. And you kept saying we'd be all right. And I had to say from January to whatever day, y'all did. So we're going to get some additional funding. That going to help our budget. And I hope they give us $5 million back. We'd be all right then.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm optimistic for the future. I think that we're heading in the right direction with the budget and we're in a better position than we've been in many years.
Splash coming in, huh? Splash money coming in?
Yes, sir. It's tracking pretty close to where we have been the last, throughout the last SQUAS and that report. You can pull it up next. I'll pull up the actual numbers.
I would have thought December would have been higher than that. Is that where it collects?
There's reports, there's a 30-day lag.
Okay.
Dr. Leece, can you go through that project, set of questions right now?
Yes, sir. The projects that we have identified for East SQUAS Ford, constructions, renovations, county-wide, as you can see, we've been doing a good bit of work. A million one has been expended on construction renovations county-wide. New Nichols Elementary School, we are in the planning phase of the new Nichols Elementary School. We will receive the final grants hopefully within the next 60 days to the state, where they'll have to be approved by the State Department. So we're probably, and I hate to guess at how long the state's going to take the process, but we're a few months away from that process finishing up. And we're going to get Nichols School out to bid as soon as we can get those plans approved from the state. I think it is important to note that we will be constructing the new Nichols School using all SQUAS funds. We won't have any state dollars to put towards Nichols Schools. So we don't earn any entitlement funding for the Nichols School because we don't show a need on the state formula for classrooms. We have enough classrooms in the county, therefore we don't earn any additional classrooms is the main reason. Do you have any other details of that?
I mean, that's exactly. We have more and more classrooms or instructional units based on our space than...
That's how we got the other money we done away with.
That was low-well money?
Yeah, we did away with classrooms, too.
Yeah. And we were able to get low wealth because of the poverty area to get that money.
Thank you, Mr. Gerald. Sid, where you at?
I'm right here.
I want to see you. I can't see you.
I'm on the podium, that's the way.
Come on up here. I want to talk to you. Sit right there.
Oh, okay.
Sit back in.
You don't want me to sit up there?
Him, Mike, I want.
Oh, I'll sit right up here. Can I sit back here?
Yeah, no, you can sit there now.
I can tell you that.
Dr. Leece, I'd like for you to get with attorney and money. It's a wiggling, it's a wiggling somewhere in that money. Get some money out there for us, for Nichols. We can get some help. I want y'all to go back to the general board and pick them up and give you a chicken. I said, can we find some money? You got, you got comptroller there, you got the attorney right there on you. You will add everybody to your team if you want to. Get some money out there. Don't be scared to go after.
Yes, sir. Well, we've never been scared to go after money, so we'll certainly look into it and see if we can find some.
What can we do, Sid?
Well, Roston, we were very fortunate. We were planning on having to spend a lot more on Roston and then we got the low-well grant, which was 2.7?
That's 3.7.
3.7. And so this money that had kind of been planned for Roston, that was kind of a force committed on, it made it nice. But this go around, we're not qualifying for any...
We're not qualified. The state has their entitlement formula in there.
And then the big picture besides that was just kind of a icing on the cake, the low-well money grant. When we get, the board permits entitlements with the state, so when they pass a budget every year, there are these capital outlay funds that you get based on the law. And on this one, the law requires needs.
It's a need, ain't it?
Well, the board decided that it was important to our system that you take every system, every school we got. And Mr. Jowers, that's probably the one that's not up to par the most, that it's time for Nichols. But as far as looking on paperwork and looking and seeing what needs to be done as far as the state, we didn't get any capital outlay money. So that's the bad news. I mean, the good news is the way the SQUAS was sold is we're going to build the people of Nichols a new school.
Yes, we are.
And, you know, we had the recession and so receipts were down 480, Mike, and that's back up to 480. But, you know, receipts went down on a monthly basis, but they're coming back up with five years' worth. So it's unlikely.
Dr. Leece, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
How long ago were y'all trying that?
We have a five-year facility plan that is approved by the board that y'all approved two years ago. And then that facility plan is what the state uses to send down our entitlement funding. They base that on that facility plan. And we are going to receive about $2.3 million in entitlement funding for Coffee High School and innovations at Coffee High School. So we will be receiving state funding for that project. But as the funding is now, we don't qualify for state funding for Nichols. And they did away with the low-well grant. They don't have that program anymore, so...
I like, Mr. Gerald, I like for the superintendent and his staff to be direct and go back to see if they can get some help. It's just like my wife. I tried to give her one time, she told me no. I went up and said, two or three times, she finally said, yeah. So keep trying.
Mr. Johnson, what you told, what you told the staff to do, and I know they're doing...
I told Dr. Leece.
Well, Dr. Leece, it goes from him on down, on the, what we have for Mr. Walker on the act, to try to get those funds. And that's, that's what, that's a possibility.
I know it is.
But, I mean, you know, that's...
Keep trying.
We missed to Dominic and all.
Well, I expect y'all to try again, while we pull back to the board on what we did. Don't give up.
I don't know.
We will look into it and see if there's any way. I'll call our facilities director of this area for the state and see if there's any way we can get any state funding. We'll certainly...
You can come back and say we got it.
Yes, sir. We'll look for it.
We'll do it, hey. Thank you.
So the Nichols Elementary School project. Next, we'll have the Coffee High School Performing Arts Center of Innovations. We met with the architect last week, Mr. Suddles, and we directed him to go back and work with Liman and Associates to see if they could push, y'all remember the plan for the Performing Arts Center? See if they could push the building itself back towards the high school to narrow that lobby down a little bit, because they're going to have that space out in front of the gym where the trophy case is at and where the concessions are at. That's a nice lobby right there. So we asked them to try to restrict that lobby as much as they can, to take some square footage out of it. And also, they're going to bid the project as a whole. And then they're also going to bid the project with the Black Box Theater as an add-alternate. So they'll bid it all together with the Black Box Theater and then they'll bid it with the Black Box Theater taken out. So whenever it goes to bid, we'll have some options on how much we spend and we'll see what the whole project comes in at and we can do whatever the board desires when we do bid that project. So that one's probably going to come back from the architects after Nichols Elementary School. So we're anticipating the plans for Nichols Elementary School being prepared and ready to go to the state before the Performing Arts Center and the high school. So we did direct the architect to try to squeeze that project... So, we did direct the, the architect to try to squeeze that project down as much as they can to save money. So, uh we feel like it's still gonna be a beautiful facility. Those who went to the Thomason-Upton facility, uh Ms. Whirl, it's a beautiful facility. So, even with the changes that we talked about, if they do those, it'll still be uh the same quality of facility that you went to and visited in Thomason.
I don't guess that the concession area would be still big enough if they had like a basketball game and something else going at the Performing Arts Center same night? It would.
I wouldn't think so. That's a good size, and there's still gonna be a lobby for the Performing Arts Center. It just won't be quite as big as on the initial drawings that we saw when they brought it back the first time, so. And then the next project is the uh technology by facility, and, and that's not a project per se, but that's, that's expenditures we'll be making. Then the uh.
Is that for computers or?
That is for.
A lot of that is um Chromebooks and Chromeboxes recently. About three hundred and seventy of that was for the wireless upgrade, which we will be getting back the majority of that from E-Rate, so that'll come back in. The balance of that's pretty much all Chrome devices for the last six months or so.
How's, how's the technology running, Dr. Lee?
It's still looking good. Going through our first round of online testing, uh high school level, that went off without a hitch. My guys um came through and got all the, the new testing software and saw, figured they had to build some new servers to support that and everything. And of course, just went pretty much flawless.
Chromeboxes working better?
Chromeboxes and Chromebooks seem to be doing a better job with some of our scholastic software. There's still a few glitches. They're adding the library and a couple of the other Chromeboxes.
You, you pleased with the doc?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. I think we've got a lot of technology that's working well, sir.
How are we dealing with the teacher training?
Uh, we're, we're working on that. Logan's been, um, he's working a lot with our new Illuminate software, but he's also been out in schools. Um, he does Google training at our central office. Um, he's out probably two, three days a week at schools, you know, training the staff. They're taking a good look.
Dr. Perry will give a professional learning update about all professional learning going on at the next meeting, so she's prepared for that. The ag building will be the first project that we did, and it's, it's um, the, the plans are being reviewed at the state right now. And as soon as we get those plans back, they'll be ready to go out for bid. So, probably in the next month to two months, we'll be ready to put that project out for bid. So, looks like the order of the projects will be the ag building to the Nichols School and then the Performing Arts Center. And those are all three pretty big, pretty big projects, so.
How is Green coming?
West Green Gym, the foundation has been forward. I don't know if steel's going up yet. Mr. Dowd, have you been by there in the last few days?
It wasn't up over the weekend unless it started this week.
We're pretty close to having steel coming out of the ground.
It's there, but they haven't.
What about George Washington Carter?
They have made some improvements over there. Um, I sent y'all an email last week, and I don't know if I can pull that up right now, that uh, let's see.
They hold up all the name tags for the doors and stuff. Why does that take us so long to get?
Mr. Morris said that he is waiting on some quotes from some vendors.
It's gonna be over.
I hope that they get quotes.
I'm not sure what vendors he's using, so if I can find it.
Have you knew Mike? So, you can solve that right quick, Mike.
He said uh signage for classrooms and hallways, waiting on a quote from several different vendors, so. Anyways.
How long you been waiting?
I guess maybe a month or two.
Well, I, I.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, you need to direct the superintendent to get, get that hell rolling. You need to step in and help him with the general.
Yes, sir. We will. Yeah, this is, yeah, we, projects completed or in progress. Uh, number one, new conference room completed at George Washington Carter. Number two, new tile in A1, V4, and V5 completed. Three, new tile in E-Wing completed. Four, sidewalks patched in progress, but almost completed, in progress, but almost completed. And five, just recently ordered chairs for new conference room and chairs for offices. Projects scheduled to begin are needing approval. One, the gate has been measured and shop print of design is being completed. Two, moving uh the family consumer signs from J building to D wing. Tearing down a wall tentatively scheduled to begin during the spring semester of sixteen. Three, new tile and carpet media center set tentatively for summer. Four, expanding the mailroom, tearing down the wall tentatively scheduled to begin summer or spring of sixteen. Five, rooms on A wing tile, old carpet to be taken out tentatively scheduled for summer. And six, signage for classrooms and hallways, waiting for a quote from several different vendors. We'll get on that tomorrow, see what they have with it, and just tell them to go ahead and get some signs and get them up, so. All right. So, hopefully George Washington will, will uh look a little better in the next few weeks we get those signs up, and so it's coming along.
Uh, I don't, I don't, you guys can fix the signs?
You know, I don't know if they can make those signs. I, I probably would be kinda crude if they just, if they made them. I'm, if it weren't professionally done, I would think.
Probably. Isn't that, where you getting these signs from?
Our local trophy shop has been closed for a couple of months. The closest place is Tifton, Wecroft, Baxley maybe.
Oh, it's all right there.
But David Minsy has involved a new, David Minsy's gonna be doing the new ones.
Hey, he's from right there. You gotta be there, you just go buy them, try.
Well, we will do some research and report back to the board as soon as we get those signs put up, so. Should luck to it. It's a beautiful campus.
But I do want you and Sid to work on, and Mike, work on that money, help Nichols out.
Oh, yes, sir.
It's a loophole in there now.
All right.
Sid?
I heard. Yes, sir.
We'll uh, and who knows? We may, we may get it.
I know you just, you just gotta ask. Hell, I don't know if they'll get it.
That's right.
Mr. Johnson says something. There's a, you done about that free lunch, didn't you, Mr. Johnson?
That's right. Yeah, just go for it. Don't be scared.
Don't ask you.
You don't ask me. You don't get.
All right. Uh, so that's the project list on the East SPOSS report that we have. Any other questions about that? All right. Are there any other questions about the monthly financial report? I would say it's looking good. Looking real good. Out-of-state travel. We've got uh several trips. Coffey High School, the Jazz Ensemble is going to Orlando uh for a competition, evaluation, performance and competition. The Drama Group is going to attend a Broadway play, Animal the Opera, in Jacksonville. And uh that will be no expense to the system. They'll pay for that. And then the Science Group from fourth grade from Satilla will be going to Jacksonville to analyze weather charts, maps, and collect weather data to predict weather events. So, be a fun field trip for the students from Satilla. And Coffey High School, and that also will be no expense to the system. And we've got a group from Coffey High School, a show choir, going to a competition in Panama City, and that will be no expense to the system. Well, actually, that's a competition. So, uh, that's the out-of-state travel. If there's no objection, we'll place that on the consent agenda with the rate of need. We've got bids, E-Rate bids. Dr. Noodle has some equipment and technology needs that have to be put out for bid according to E-Rate laws and regulations. So, uh, Dr. Noodle, if you want to describe what this bid and what these, these projects are.
We've got four um bids that were due up for rebidding. Um, our telephone service was the first one that we put out there. We evaluated these this week in the opening. We had two vendors submit bids, proposals for continuation of our telephone service. Alma Telephone, or ATC Broadband, and Stitchtail. And ATC is the recommended vendor. You see the cost there, thirty-one hundred dollars a month. That's for our, all of our phone service. That's um to continue with our voice over IP phone system, but it will move it from a local to a cloud-hosted system, which means we keep all our current home equipment. Um, they will just basically take the servers out of the loop. Everything will be hosted on Alma Telephone servers, which meant, means basically um we got a web interface to manage the phone system. Fewer moving parts, fewer potential points of failure. Um, that's significantly lower than what we're paying right now. It's about two thousand a month lower than what we're currently paying.
Really? Yeah, but right now?
It is with Windstream right now.
Did they not bid again?
They submitted a bid after the bid.
Why do we only get, I mean, when you put a bid, not just you, but it seems like a lot of times when bids are put out there, we only get two or three, two or three businesses.
Phone services, there's, you've got a limited number of providers in the area that have the infrastructure in place to, to handle that locally. As far as having.
How do, how do you bid them out? I mean, how?
We posted on our website, and we also, so these are funded through E-Rate. Their E-Rate eligible, we also follow, it's called Form 470, which is an attempt to, to bid out a project with USAC on their website, and it posts it on the federal E-Rate website. So, any potential bidders that are interested in our area can sign up for alerts, so as soon as I post that.
Does ATC not have a?
Not for telephone. They did bid on our cellular service. I'll show you in a sec.
I mean, I, I just wondered. I don't, I don't know how you get amounts to, to who could bid on.
There's, there's.
You only get a few people that bid on anything.
Any vendor that has what's called a spin number, a service provider identification number with E-Rate, signs up for alerts for any services that they're interested in and within certain geographic areas. And as those are posted, they get automatic notifications that there's a project out there that, that they may be interested in bidding, so.
Where's the other company from that's?
Stitchtail, that is John Royals Company. Um, John lives in Atlanta. The company's based there. He is, um, he has a presence in Tifton, and he's also looking to open a retail or office location here in Dallas. He has some local customers right now.
Yeah, he's a Coffey County high school graduate. Done real well in the telecom business, so.
But based on the, the two qualified bids, our recommendation is to order our phone service uh to Alma Telephone for the next year.
Do you know anybody else that uses them? I'm, I'm just curious, I guess.
We had, they were our provider before, um, five years ago, before we switched over to Windstream. And, and again, just basically our, all our analog or Centrex clients would just port it over, be sending a list of numbers, and they automatically port those over.
And we had good service?
Yeah.
Yeah, ATC's a big provider for this.
For quality service, and again, we don't have to buy any additional equipment. In fact, it's gonna save us money right now. Um, there are some requests. We've got several requests for additional phones. And while we have the physical phones, we could acquire um some relatively low-priced phones. The problem with that is you have a lot of licenses to go on our server, and you're looking at seven or eight hundred dollars for a phone license to put it on the network.
I'm just curious.
With a cloud service like that, they handle all the licenses in the bottom of the vault, so if we have a phone, we can activate it, and then. And again, um, phone service through E-Rate is being phased out, and that's both landline and cellular, so they're cutting it twenty percent per year. So, next year, it's gonna be down around forty to fifty percent um discount rate. So, we'll be paying more of a percentage of our phone bill going forward. The next one is internet bandwidth. We have two internet connections here in the school system. One is provided through AT&amp;T by the state of Georgia. Um, they filed that through E-Rate on our behalf. Yeah, we give them basically permission to file on our behalf, and that is, has traditionally been a very, very slow connection. That has been boosted up to one point two gig in the last year, which is a great connection. You know, we're not paying anything. The DOE is paying the, the non-discounted portion of that. Um, but AT&amp;C and Windstream have both provided internet connection services in the past. Um, ATC came in for this bandwidth. This is a one gig or a thousand megabyte service. They came in with a price of thirty-five hundred dollars a month. We're currently paying five thousand dollars a month for that same service. So, they're actually cutting the price fifteen hundred dollars as the internet continues to expand, bandwidth is getting less and less expensive, so. They were sole qualified bidder. They are providing that service now through PeachNet, and this will continue our current service at a lower cost. So, our recommendation is to remain with ATC. For our cell service, we did have two proposals, one from Verizon Wireless and one from AT&amp;T. Looking at the cost, Verizon is our current provider. Verizon was significantly lower, about twenty-five hundred fifty-five dollars a month, lower than AT&amp;T. And um from our experience and all our contacts that we've dealt with, has a, a lot better service in Coffey County area. Um, there's a couple of schools that would probably benefit from AT&amp;T's coverage. Um, Ambrose and West Green will probably do a little bit, have a little bit better service than we have now with Verizon. But looking at the county as a whole, Verizon's got far better coverage, not County Life than AT&amp;T does. So, our proposal, our recommendation is to stay with Verizon for the cell service. And then the last item is our wide area network. This is the least fiber connection that connects our central data center over here, our server room, to each school. We've got least fiber lines going from this site out to each school, running a full ten gig network. It's again about as, as fast as you can get uh landlines. Um, ATC has been providing this since we've had a network. It used to be uh one gig, we upped it to ten gig about five years ago. ATC's had it the entire time. They were the sole bidder on that, and they have actually dropped our price fifty dollars per site per month over what we're currently paying uh continued service for that. We're preparing to do that service. We never had any trouble, but our recommendation is to continue with ATC broadband. And that's all I have. Once approved, um, these will be filed, and we should hear back from USAC in spring. They're saying they're gonna process it faster this year, so we'll be spending May, um, April, May timeframe to get approval and go ahead and get lineup and get all these started.
Any questions?
Yes.
What's the, I know we, we're showing it, um, the proposal from Verizon is, is a dollar, is a dollar amount less than AT&amp;T, but what are we actually spending for uh?
Um, it averages around six thousand a month total when you look at all, um, everything. Again, a portion of that is E-Rate eligible, and that portion is dropping year by year as they're phasing out support of that. The, um, the smartphone lines, I think per phone, the difference was about seven or eight dollars per phone per month. It's higher if you're at AT&amp;T.
Then one more question on the, speaking of smartphones, um, I know this is an issue with some of the new technology. Where the phone will switch to cellular data coverage if the Wi-Fi signal's not strong enough? Or do we have a cap on what we pay for, for, for datas or?
I'm limited to voice and data.
There's unlimited data, because there's no, we wouldn't approve any additional cost if the data usage was.
There is a, there's a limit on the standard phones, the voice phones. We got a hundred minutes or a hundred, yeah, a hundred minutes, a hundred texts a month on those, but the smartphones are unlimited.
But you were saying that, that E-Rate's gonna cut us twenty percent next year. You were saying that E-Rate's going to cut us twenty percent next year, but from a budget standpoint, what we think would save on each of these, we still should be better off than we were last year.
Yes. Verizon's price of writing lines, it's consistent with what we currently pay. That hasn't changed, but all of the services with ATC Rockman have dropped over what we're currently paying.
We've, Verizon will assess us for five, it's five less. Oh, no, that came last night.
Less than, I got the ATC, I got the dollar.
All right, and that's information, Adam. We will approve that at the next regular meeting, next month's regular meeting in February. So that's just information for tonight. Baseball concession bid. We did receive the concession bid for the baseball complex in Harper Builders is the low bid. As you'll see, we had two contractors bid on this project. And Harper Builders, the low bid was a hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Calendar days, they say they can build it in seventy-five days, and they met the requirements for bond, insurity, and insurance. So we're recommending that we accept the low bid of Harper Builders for that project.
Who are you talking about? Who's up there?
I, I saw Jeffrey today, and he said they could build it in seventy-five days. He said he is, is sitting on the go. I explained to him that our conversations have been that it might be something that we have to, to put off until we see how some other projects come in.
I think that'd be the wise thing to do. Yeah, we're already talking cost budget. What happens to do the project for God without adding one out of the blue? They need it. I agree with that, but I don't think right now we should, we need to be obligated for something if we don't feel like a little way out without getting some bids in on this other stuff.
My understanding that Coach Cole said right now, he said they had the money to do that.
No, that was some of the projects I'm talking about.
Yeah.
They came in here, they had what, a whole five different things they wanted done. And they said they had the money for one of them.
I thought it was debt.
No, this is the one we were going to build out and see about. I think they want some stuff down the field, the walls and stuff. There was stuff with hidden stuff that they said they could cover. And then there was some turf stuff that, you know, we said right now we probably didn't have money for.
We didn't have some money in SPOS that was allocated for athletics.
Well, we talked about that, and that was just one of the general things that was in there, and that's kind of, you know, my interpretation, but we talked about it last week or two weeks ago. That was just, you know, the money is not there. We just said if we have the money, that's, you know, what we can kind of do with. I would personally like, so like I said, they had about four different things done. I know we can't do them all right now because we do have to wait and see what's going on with performing arts and some of these. The concessions stand, I would like to see that. I mean, we've got a program, it's got people coming out of town, this program, we don't even have a concession stand. We're over there in the high school, that football field, trying to get hot dogs and run back for a twin.
That's ridiculous.
And I agree with you. I know we got, and these other projects, and that's what, you know, that other meeting we talked about, that probably do need to be waited on, and let's see, in the end, if we have the money, I'll...
Which was explained to me, I mean, there was, on that one sheet, there's certain amounts of money that were for athletics, for whatever.
There was one more million dollars that's set on there for athletic and for, but that's if we have the money, obviously, after we do the projects.
Finish your projects.
That we got up there like the performing arts and the egg barn and the renovations. Well, at that same meeting that we talked about that, he comes in here with the performing arts center was a lot higher than what we thought. So the question is, are we going to have enough money in the end for everything we want to do? Yes, we had it in there on a, I guess, a wish list, but will we have the money at the end is what we're saying, you know, I don't know. I'd like to do all of them.
I know, but we're not talking about a million.
No, and that's why I'm saying with the concession stand, I'd like to see us go ahead and get that done. They need that period. The other stuff is, is needed, but we probably, and I discussed that with him, you know, we probably do need to wait and see where we end up on some of these other projects. But that one's kind of a, I mean, you know, that's, to me, that's kind of ridiculous that we've got, we don't have a concession stand or bathroom or anything right there for the, you know, that's, that's my opinion, but.
I agree. I, I just feel like there should be some way that we could fund this, it's, I mean...
I mean, this something's just come up out of blue, and we got all these other projects already decided to do.
I mean, I, my concern is, and I'll give you, I'll give you a couple of examples. I know we've got a quote here, and he's got, he's got, you know, if it gets approved, he's got a bill for that. But when we initially started talking about the, doing audio and the curtains and everything in the middle school, and it desperately needed doing because it was originally planned to do, we had stuff just sit in the closet. But it went from being a hundred, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to what did we end up putting there?
Three thirty.
The ag facility, when we, when we ballparked it all, on the original discussions years ago about what we were going to do with this SPOS four, that was a right around half a million dollars was what was up on the wall, of estimated cost based on conversations we'd had with other counties that had that facility. Now it's up to...
Estimated, doesn't mean too...
Okay. So I think what Mr. Jowers is saying is, we've done a lot of careful planning about how we want to go about our business with SPOS four, and we've got to understand where we're going to come in with those projects. We don't really know what Nichols is going to come in at, because it's not out for bid yet. I, my recommendation would be to find out how long this quote is good for, and then how, how long will it be before we get the quotes back from Nichols as far as architectural? When I say for the quote, it'd be the architectural, and then we'd have to put it out for bid for construction. Is that the steps?
Yep.
We get, we get the architectural back.
We should be able to know something in time for next spring, maybe, like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying when, because I, we don't even know what Nichols is going to come in at. If it doesn't come in at what we think it's going to come in at, we, we're going to be struggling to get what's already on the SPOS plans. And that includes buses, that includes, you know, SPOS three, we spent a third, actually more than a third of SPOS three was on countywide renovations, ten point eight million dollars on, and can you name anything?
It's a toe.
Okay. But I mean, I, I appreciate you naming some.
Westside.
Well, Westside was a separate line item, whatever was, is that included in that toe?
No, that wasn't.
Okay. So, but that was a five and a half million dollar project of Westside. So that's half the money on countywide renovations that went into one school. I just think we've got to be careful about the unknown. You know, we know what this one's going to be? How long, how long will he hold that quote for us for? It'd be interesting if he'd hold it for us until we kind of find out what Nichols is going to run us. If Nichols comes in and it's a million dollars more than what we thought, you know, if it's a million dollars less, then we do some things.
We already have what, Forward Arts Center, right?
We're already pulling it back in.
You know.
Which isn't wrong, you know, it's just this rally, we've only got so many dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Jowers.
Now, look back over the past. Everything that we touched turns to gold. We're dealing with kids. My face ain't moved forward with the project. I grew up in this lot, this world. I ain't worried about what the project coming into, because the money going to come, because we're dealing with children. This ain't Washington DC. This W is Georgia. When you put some out of children, it happen. So do we do move on, do move now or move later?
It's really, it's pleasure for the board. I came into this, I'll be honest, under a week talk earlier this week, I came into it a little more conservative. I will say, after talking with Jeffrey today and him, my concern was the, part of my concern was the baseball events that are about to start. And, and he informed me that he's got the plan, it was part of the bid, the fence in that area, he's going to put up fencing, and it's in the bid, as part of the bid, is the fence in the area where the construction's going to be going on. So he's got a solid plan for that. He said he thought that he could have it done within the seventy-five days. He just, he was very positive when I talked to him today, I'm sure he would be, but that, that he could do it quickly, and he could do it safely in that area with baseball games going on. Because that was part of my concern, baseball games are going to be going on, and is it realistic to think they're going to be doing that there?
And we had a concession, that's what we need. Have y'all been out there?
We all gonna have it for the baseball stadium.
But he'd be close.
Late.
He'd be close. Baseball only starts in two months, February, March.
I'm not there already.
Yeah, they're right.
Get going.
But we need that concession stand, so if you want to vote on...
It would finish the complex out, out there, and it would be all done, the baseball complex, tennis complex.
And that's a concern, like, I don't like, Chris, we do something and then we don't complete it, just like the thing at the middle school. That wouldn't have been a problem if it had been completed when it was supposed to have been. And I just hate leaving things have to, if, you know, if you're going to have a baseball, a nice baseball field and all that, then have a concession stand. I mean, that, that's only natural to have it with it.
I'm not a guest, get me wrong, I'm all for them having it. I also look at the money.
Yep.
And I know, Mr. Johnson, you know, it's for kids, the money's going to come and...
It's coming, Mr. Johnson.
You know, maybe act like we Washington, maybe.
Yeah.
It's been something we ain't got, so.
But it's coming.
Yeah.
Western Richardson's been in our house.
It may be, and it may not, but apart from that, we've got all these other projects. It's all ready to take him up the bay.
Well...
You don't do what you want to, and I can't go nowhere without that. Next spring, that'd be another...
Well, and, and I agree with you somewhat on what you're saying. I, you know, we, a lot of projects that they came up here with, I don't think we, and, you know, we talked about that, I don't think we can go do that. I agree, you've got to wait and see some of that stuff, and this project's one that, I mean, it's not every year. Well, to me, it is a little different than the other projects, and that it's something that you need for that facility, you know, and so we're sitting there saying, well, let's wait till we see. It needs to be done regardless, so when are we going to wait until? I mean, what's the difference in, you know, if it's got to be done, it needs to be done, you find the money, you get it done, and you, you know, I just don't, I mean, I agree with you in principle on the other parts, the other projects that they want to do, that that needs to be waited until the end of this SPOS, to see what we got left. But I just think this one needs to be worked in this SPOS somehow.
I just don't believe the hundred twenty-four thousand.
I don't mind working it, but not now.
Well, but my point is, if we're saying we're not working in now, what's the difference in working in now or next one?
We got a better idea of where we're going to stand with those expenditures.
If I could, I'll, I'll go back to this Nichols piece, and Doc, when you called me the other day, that, that was, that was discussed, is where does Nichols come in? And, and as a conservative part of me, which, which says, you know, if Nichols comes in and it gives us some room to call and say, go with this, I'll go, go with this. If Nichols comes in and it's a million dollars high, five hundred thousand dollars high, then, then we got, if we go ahead and say we're going to do this now, Nichols comes in high, where are we going to start cutting after that? Because we're going to have to cut from somewhere, whether it's bus, or whether it's improvements to other campuses or other, other facilities, whether it's technology, whatever, you know, just because we've got some money bonded, we've got some money bonded on projects that we've been talking about for three or four years, not a few months. And, and I just think, I think it'd be a wise thing to see where the Nichols project comes in. And at that time, maybe come back and readdress this opportunity.
If it comes, if it comes in a million dollar or a hundred twenty-four thousand dollars, I can make a difference on it.
What's your recommendation? Well, you know, we came into this meeting prepared to present this as, as an item to, to, to discuss. We talked about these work sessions being, the plan that we put together is that it would be for, you know, the next, next meeting. With that being said, you know, I, I understand both positions and...
If we wait till the next meeting, will we have a quote on the Nichols school?
No, we'll probably, maybe four months, maybe six months on the Nichols school.
Right, well, and it would, it would even delay it being, if, if they could do it in seventy-five, it would delay being, being used for the games this year. And that's one way a baseball team makes money, is to be able to have a concession stand.
And I will say, I've had some additional information brought to me today that made me a little more comfortable with the idea of moving forward with it, the idea that they can get it done within the seventy-five days. And knowing that they can get it done within seventy-five days, and knowing that they would secure the area behind home plate, makes me feel better about saying I would agree to move forward with the project. I don't think the hundred twenty-four is going to break us on our next project. I would feel more comfortable knowing what Nichols is going to cost us. But what it means is that we all need to understand that there is no wants of this SPOS, it's about needs. And if this is an important enough need that we need to do it, then I'm comfortable doing it. But knowing going forward, we've already talked with Dr. Newell about technology, and we talked to some of the other directors, we're not going to be able to go out and get wants with this SPOS. It's going to be about pure need. And so I think the board needs to understand that picture too, and maybe this helps make it clear, this decision, and we're going to have to certainly be conservative with Nichols and with the performing arts and...
I love it they built without this.
This was torn, it was removed before I, this is not the fifth year here, so I'm, I just...
I didn't have one, I mean, I...
Do you go to the games?
No.
If you go to the games, you know they don't have...
No, no, I get it.
It's bad out there and nothing there.
Quite frankly, this is what, because I didn't have anybody that played baseball, nephew, anything like that. It's, you know, we did, we did faircloth, and it was wonderful, and that's great facility, and everything else. And then when the city did the joint facility at the middle school, I, and I hand got it as well, I thought, I thought they used the high school facility to practice at and they play at Walker Park. No, I said I did, because of that facility is so nice, and it, I know it's not on the high school campus, but very few, you know, arenas are actually on high school campuses or off somewhere else, and you go to the high school team plays at. I thought we used that facility, I thought that's where the games were played.
They've got, they've got a nice field at the high school, though.
No, it is, it is. No, I have no doubt. Yeah, I mean, I just, but when that...
But if you're saying wanting a need, I see it as a need, because you've got, you've got a, a field out there that's not, really nice, and, and kids that are playing, their parents come to support them, that number, number one, the team needs a way to help support itself, because money is so tight, and concession stands will help them to maybe purchase some things that they, that they need. You've got a captive audience there, you, they're hungry. I think they, they usually late afternoon, you want something to drink, you want something to eat. It's, I don't see it as a, as a want, it's part of that facility.
Well, I guess you, you termed it a little bit better, that's what I was trying to say a minute ago, there were about four projects, and I agree that some of them were wants, and that we needed to wait and see what we had after all this stuff. But I, I agree with that one, and that's what I was trying to say, I guess, you termed it better, but that one, to me, is a need. You know, but, you know, it's whatever everybody...
Looking at two and a half months, I mean, if you're going to wait that long to get it finished, you're just going to wait.
And that's my question to you, now, you were talking about blocking off the area behind home plate out there, that's where everybody sits at. Is that going to interfere with, I mean, we, that we talk to Josh and say, is this going to interfere with the games? Is this something they want to wait till the summer? I mean, have you discussed that with him, construction during the season time start or not? I, I have not, but I would think that they would be eager to see it constructed as soon as possible, and we have, we have, what can be bought off that?
We had, we had, what can be bought off of West Coast School, we didn't stop the, something fall on it, crushing it in either, there'd been kids there.
Yes, sir.
What you want to do with this?
Well, after hearing everybody and, and having, I think, a clear picture of where we stand with our squad's budget, I'm comfortable we can manage our squad's funds with the projects we have listed. Ideally, would I like to see what Nichols is gonna come in at? Yes.
You say six months?
But we don't have that, we don't have that luxury.
It's gonna come in right.
So I'm gonna recommend that we go ahead and do this project and move forward immediately, and that's my recommendation.
Then we need to go on, Mr. Terry?
Well, we'll, we'll place it on the consent agenda for, for the regular monthly-
That'd be great, I mean, not consent agenda, except I-
Separate, we'll put it on the agenda for that, yes, sir.
But we don't need a vote here to do that?
No, we'll just put them-
Can we, can we make it with a recommendation, we carve out a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a tile at the high school renovations if we can't pay for it?
Yes, we'll have to do that, yes, sir.
Always on the-
Two, two un-air-conditioned classrooms.
You were right on the west side, that was a separate line.
The west side was separate, so, so, so what I'm saying is-
Ten million.
Ten point eight, almost eleven of just stuff.
That had to be done.
A piece, a piece of that was settled, and then there were a number of other projects at the high school that were done.
I know, but I mean, I, my, my point is that, that money can get spent, if, you know, you only gotta do, pay more of those than you got many dollars spent, I'm not that we're gonna build eight.
Well, I agree with you, and that's what, you know, we, they came in with four hundred something thousand, you know, and we, we picked out one that we thought was a need, and the other three hundred something thousand will have to wait until we sell.
And there was some more folks here that night needing some stuff too, wasn't it?
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Now, that bid, if it came in at that low, if you wait till it through the month, it's still gonna go up. So I believe in my opinion that every project that we deal with will be successful. I believe we have the money to do every one of them, that's how you got to think outside the box.
And you are right, construction costs could, could likely go up in the next six months, so.
A lot of oil workers out of work right now with construction jobs.
That's right, so that's what I'm trying to tell you, we need to move forward on these projects. When Nichols gone, whatever we have to do, we need to do it. We don't need to be talking about how we gonna get this, how we gonna get that.
All right.
It can be done.
Policies.
When we gonna go on, need, need-
At the-
Regularly.
Uh, approval of policy, script for code I H F, this has been on the table for thirty days, we'll place it on the consent agenda for regular meeting. Regulation G B R L, this deals with the employee dress code. With the cold weather, we've had some female employees that are wearing tights, of course, the tights are appropriated, you have a dress or a skirt on it, we found that when we reviewed our regulation, we didn't include, uh, tights with a dress or a skirt, so you will see we've add, we've added under dresses and skirts, leggings and jeggings may be worn with an appropriate dress or skirt, I'm not real sure what a jegging is, I'm still not sure about that.
Jeans that are making-
Uh, but we will allow those if they have a dress or a skirt on.
Mr. Clayton, there's a big cartoon on, on Facebook that shows the appropriate way to wear leggings, so if you need it, I'll send it to you.
All right. And since the cold weather is upon us, I would consider that to be an emergency, and we'll go ahead and place that on the agenda to be approved in the regular meeting.
Phil, appreciate it.
I just ask why you're, I don't, I just don't know why you're discriminating against men.
Actually, it's a, uh-
They don't wanna wear-
It's actually-
They're sorry for it, skirt.
It's actually in our policy manual, it's a regulation, and, and, you know, I may ask, really, this was a, a informational item, uh, but it's, it's, I wanted to make you aware of it, and, uh, so it's not the actual policy, it's just a regulation that follows under the policy, but I wanted to make the board aware of it. Budget plan, that was it, regulation G B R L? Yeah, that's the one that's been sitting on the table for the last thirty days, the, the update to the grad policy, and that cleaned up the grad policy. That will be approved tonight on the consent agenda. Budget plan, we put together a, a plan for developing our FY seventeen budget, and, uh, Mr. Dre Hush is, is our comptroller, responsible for the finance department, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Dre Hush to talk about our plan for developing the budget for FY seventeen.
Thank you, Dr. Leece. Okay, um, budgeting is not just a balancing act, but it's also a bit of an art, and that's why we decided to kinda dress this up a little bit. Dr. Leece wanted to see a little more than just a laundry list of, um, kind of key events that we'll be going through, and we'll have a more detailed schedule as we move forward and begin to plan some of these meetings with, with, uh, various principals. Um, it is a team effort, we have, uh, central office administration from all areas involved in those meetings along with the, uh, the principals and their, some of their staff when we go through this process. So in January, we're beginning this process, that's kind of today. February, we'll begin, um, looking at enrollment and current staffing levels at, at the facilities and see what those trends are looking like as far as enrollment's concerned, and students at various schools and grade levels and so on. And then, uh, we'll also look at current staffing and see where, you know, things are, where we're at as far as our current staffing and how that matches up in looking at classroom size, and we'll, we'll be reporting back to the board regularly at these work sessions as we go through this process.
Oh, then, uh-
Yes, sir.
We're gonna, we're gonna be in the meetings, that's what we said at our retreat, that we be in all of them.
Yeah.
Now, we report back to, we're gonna report to Efa, who gonna be sitting there.
All right.
And that's what we, we said at the retreat, and I don't want nobody to get, get it twisted.
Yeah.
That's part of our job, policy, budget, and having a superintendent, so we gonna be in every one of them.
Well, we thought what we would do is-
No, no thing, we gonna be sitting there.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and when you say sitting in the meetings-
We gonna know from, from one dollar to sixty-two million, we gonna know, we gonna have to say so on, uh, you know, we need to keep this, we don't want you to come out here and tell us, we gonna be sitting there telling you, we gonna listen, and then we gonna talk to you.
Yeah.
And you can talk to them, that's how it gonna work this time, we had said this now, we don't, we don't get it twisted, dawg, we gonna be in all these meetings, we gonna know everything, cause we might disagree with you, we didn't wanna have to come out here and disagree with you, we gonna sit back there and say, do your presentation, now we gonna executive session to discuss this.
And that's what we'll do at work sessions, that'll be what we do.
That'll be too late.
And we've got a retreat scheduled too.
That'll be too late.
Yeah.
We wanna have hands on on this, on this upcoming budget, and that what we say, Mr. Josh?
That's right.
Yeah.
In the meetings with-
We'll be sitting there listening.
The board and-
Budget process.
Budget process.
Yeah.
That's how we gonna do it.
Yeah.
Where you start.
Where you start, we gonna be sitting up to you.
Are you talking about with each, every person?
Everybody.
Every meeting they have a P S with?
We got the right to say, well, we gonna cut or what we not gonna cut, they might recommend, recommend it to us, but we might say, no, we need those teachers, we need that principal, we need all these people, you pay the work, you know, less, you might wanna cut some more. We gonna have to say so right then and there, we gonna tell you, Dr. Leece, not them, we gonna talk to you, cause that's in our policy.
Yeah.
Those three things.
Well, I understand that, yes, sir, and, but I, I think coming to every budget meeting that we have would be a little extreme.
I don't know, cause if you come to us and tell us you wanna do this, and we say no, now you gotta go back to the joint board, we can tell you yes or no then, and then the people gonna look at us crazy, why y'all didn't know this? See, we, you work for the system, and those, those gentlemen, them ladies and gentlemen work for you, you work for us.
Yes, sir.
These five right here, and in our, y'all description, what they say, Sid?
Yes, sir, straight knowledge, what you said, um, you know, three things, yes.
Repeated.
Y'all pass the budget, y'all pass policies, y'all hire the superintendent.
Okay, that's for the reference, Robin, don't come to us and tell us, well, we don't have to cut this and cut that, you didn't talk to us right then, it don't take you five minutes to tell us, we can disagree in five minutes or agree, but we may right in that room.
Yes, sir.
That's what we say, you kept the minutes, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, go back and read them, see what they say.
Well-
How long do y'all have budget plan?
I, we'll start meeting in the next, our plan is, is to meet starting in February, uh, meeting with each department, we'll have a department meeting with, with each director, and so you're talking probably six, seven meetings, uh, then we'll have a meeting with each principal, so you're talking another twelve to thirteen meetings, so you're looking at probably twenty to twenty-five meetings, uh, potentially that we'll be having, and they'll go, each meeting could go an hour, hour and a half, uh, so we're looking at potentially thirty or forty hours of meetings, uh, so.
Why don't you get us a schedule of the meetings, I mean, if we wanna be there, we can.
Yeah.
We don't, we won't.
Do it that way.
Keep the door open.
Keep the door open.
We know how you gonna schedule us.
Um, this is something, there, there's two things, one, I think it's out of our scope of responsibility as a full board, as a called board meeting. I, I talked about this last year about having a committee, I know we're a small board, but still having a committee, having a, having a, a board member that serves on the personnel committee that has meetings with Ms. Clayton and Dr. Leece about staffing needs and, and concerns, and so when we come back to a meeting of the full board, we can discuss it, kinda educate each other up, someone would be on budget, uh, some, you know, that, that, maybe the top two or three departmental focuses that we have, a board member is a committee chair, okay, not in any sort of decision-making capacity, but certainly in, in, in a capacity where they can sit in, get a point of information, and, and then be ready to discuss it, share, share that information with all the board members, and be ready to discuss it. I think that's, I think that's within our scope. Um, asking, asking a principal, asking a department head that's got administrative needs, that they, that they know they've gotta, gotta do as part of their job, uh, what we tasked Dr. Leece to do with the budget, they've got to have an opportunity to have candid discussions without the interference of the monthly amateurs that are up here, up here temporarily based on election cycle, it's not our salary job, and so there's some, there's, we gotta determine what's within our scope according to House Bill eighty-four, which is lawful, and what's outside our scope according to House Bill eighty-four, which is lawful, Sid, so we need to understand where we go outside the bounds of House Bill eighty-four, and where we stay within the bounds of House Bill eighty-four.
And Senate Bill eighty-four also says, it ain't no harm in listening, because we can be talking to one person, not the directors and all that stuff.
I'm glad we necessary to talk about coming in here and taking over the meeting as an observer.
Yeah, we got that right.
To get information, I, you know, I don't intend to come in here and just jump out here and go, yeah, yeah.
Ain't no one.
But you know, but, but quite honestly, board members, you carry a certain amount of respect and, and really, it's hard to take that board member hat off when you're not a board member, when you're not sitting behind this, and you're legally not, when you're, when you're not behind here, you're legally not a board member. Uh, but I think it creates what could be an unhealthy atmosphere, uh, if we've got staff that, that we're trying to have, as Mr. Preston alluded to, some, some, uh, conversation about what's best for the system, and I just, I, creates a little bit of concern about the pressure that could be, uh, created.
That concerns me, cause what, what do anybody have to hide? I mean, if they're talking about what money the, the taxpayer, what money that they're spending, that's what they're talking about.
We've done that before, haven't we?
Yeah, we did, it worked out good, too, we didn't have, we didn't sit down, let me tell you something, Dr. Leece, listen to what I'm gonna tell you, this is very important, how much is our budget?
Sixty-two million dollars.
Okay, if you came in with a recommendation to us, for us to approve, who approved the budget?
The board.
Okay, if we say no, where you at? You right back to the joint board, so we in the process, listening, and we can tell you, not, might, Dr. Leece, we disagree with that.
Yes, sir.
You gonna have to go back to them and say, come up with something else.
Well, and I think part of the problem is if we, if we just, as in the past when we've just been given the budget, and even with the pies and whatever, it's like, well, you know, well, this is, when we ask about something, well, part of it's here and part of it's, if you're listening to it, you might, we might have a better understanding of how that pie goes together, but it's like, you're, you're telling us that part of money comes from here and then part, but it's, it's very confusing, we don't really know what money's being spent where, and, you know, it's just, it's hard to approve something you don't understand.
Here's what concerns me, and I agree that we need to, and I think everybody agree on that, that's how this got started, that we need to have a little bit better idea of what we're working with in these budgets and how they're coming together and all. The thing that concerns me, though, i- is that we do have, one of our duties is to set the budget, which is basically a, we're managing the budget, but then the one thing they don't want us to do is to micromanage stuff, my concern is where we're falling in amongst there, you know, are we, are we moving from managing something to get into micro-managing, and that's what I wanna figure out before we go sit down and too many meetings with principals and everybody else, where are we falling in that scope?
Well, if your wife came to you and said, will you sign this check, Adam, I'm gonna go, don't you wanna, don't you wanna know what she's gonna say?
Do you wanna come in here with a board with full understanding and an agreement with the budget, and come out here and then get it voted down?
I agree with you, and that's-
Well, and that, and that, you could send that back-
Then you go all the way back through it.
And then you just send us back and say, I don't agree with that, and you voted up or down, and then-
There's way no more than that, just keep us involved.
That's right.
And I agree, I agree with that, but my question is, how do we do that, just like you're talking about, without stepping over that line and getting into something we don't need to be?
I tell you how we do it, boy.
How do we make sure, I'm just saying, how do we make sure that we don't get to the point we don't need to be, but at the same time, get where you're trying to go?
And I don't wanna be disrespectful, but where we were at before got this school system on probation with Zach's, we almost-
A lot of our credo, yeah.
Not causing that.
Yeah, what you got to that?
Listen, I'm positive.
Now, the, when we hired Dr. Leece, we were very, the word at the time, um, was very, the, the focus was budget, and it was, we wanna be involved, and we, so we had retreats, we had work sessions that were, a lot of them were simply budget-focused, uh, work sessions. We, we were provided this information in the spring, um, we went down through it, we, we asked questions, I've got all mines all marked up with what was what. My, my point is, we did get the information, okay?
It's not, it's still not clear.
It, but if I wanna ask you a question of how come our, our expense on teachers was four hundred thousand dollars more than it was the previous year, or the, uh, state health insurance, why is it two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars more, teacher retirement, why is it three hundred nineteen thousand dollars?
Cause everything go up, Mr. Preston.
Well, but we also were given an understanding as to why things go up, we found out that they increased state, uh, state, uh, teacher retirement by, from seven to thirteen.
One point one percent.
One point one percent.
Okay, but my, my point is, we went through these exercises. We, we did.
And we went through, also went through.
You talking about three years ago?
No, I'm talking about this is last year, the two thousand sixteen budget.
I got that same book.
Yes, sir.
Not voted on, but.
We got, but we got this handout, this handout piece we got in the spring retreat. What I'm saying is, he's been transparent. I don't, I don't think there's any question of that. I, look, I'll vote tonight right now, if we're gonna have, uh, to be in budget meetings, uh, that we get, we get paid by the meeting. Because there's a lot of counties that get paid by the meeting, and that might solve our problem, Mr. Warwick, is, uh, I don't want to give us a monthly.
Let me tell you something, Mr. Preston, let me tell you something. Y'all don't give me nothing, I'm living. Y'all take care of me. Now, let, listen, I heard you out. I didn't say go in there and talk. I said, listen, if they ain't terminated by we sitting there, I, I said this last month, what we should do. I, I told Dr. Lee and the board, every board member needs to be assigned to a department. And that again, the department head and Dr. Lee can talk to that member, come up here and discuss what went on.
So I'm fine with something like that, yeah.
That, and I believe Mr. Preston on that. I think that need to be done, should have been done, but let me tell you something. I don't want to embarrass you.
Yes, sir.
Because you can't, you come in here and talk about this is budget, and we didn't have no input on it.
Can you vote it down?
We voted down. Then you right behind they ball, you won't get to July the first. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, I just, I just want to operate using best practices and sound, uh, governance. And, and if you look at the Saks, uh, standards on governance and leadership, uh, they're quite clear that, uh, you know, there's a room for board-level governance, and there's a, a room for administration. And these five planning meetings, uh, are really administrative roles. And it just appears that, you know, if, if we're gonna have the board in every planning meeting that we have, then that, to me, is, is really, is cumbersome, it's, it creates.
What you hiding?
I think a situation. No, we're not hiding anything.
So let me ask you a question. Let's have a retreat with all the, um, directors and administrators there, and go over then.
Yeah.
Then we won't have to be in what way? That'd help me.
Yeah.
When you sit at the next retreat. When you sit at the next retreat, have every one of your directors and principals can tell the board on what they're planning on doing. And we gotta be in every meeting. How is that?
That'd be great.
Okay. Let's do it that way.
I, I have a problem. I think that solves both issues.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah, and, and let me add this, quite frankly, quite frankly, who want to be in those meetings is the school government council?
Let them come too.
They should be. That is, that is true.
Let them all come.
I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Let the meeting.
Well, if you have a meeting of the board, it is a public meeting, so when we have our March fourth retreat, that is a, a.
I want to be.
Public meeting.
I want everybody to hear that, hear that budget.
Well, that's all I want to accomplish, is being able to be more involved in the budget. At the same time, keep it from looking like we're getting into something we don't need to do.
I don't want to do that.
If we can do it like that, I'm fine with that.
Just do it like that, dog.
All right, so March fourth retreat, we'll have.
Everybody.
The directors from there and the, and the principals there.
In the meeting.
But what, what about what Brian said? Because I think that's an excellent, uh, suggestion, that the, that the, uh, government councils be involved in the.
I agree.
I mean, they're already involved with the selection of principals, they should be involved in the money.
Get them to come for each one for it to come or something.
Well, there's a way to do it that I think will satisfy y'all, but I, I just.
I mean, honestly, the, the governing council piece, they are, they are to be advocates for their school.
That's right.
And, and we, there, there is that piece in there, you know, that's got to do with how they want to allocate some things.
So we in that now, right?
Yes, I think a retreat setting would be great. We can have each principal come in and go over their staff and with, with y'all and explain where we're at. Um, that gives us February to, to do some work, and because it's a lot of work involved in this, too, and, and, and that's, that's the piece that I, I think creates, um, a situation where, where we've just got a lot of work that's gotta get done.
I don't want to be involved in micromanaging because I was part of that when Saks came down. They tried to make me the scapegoat, but there was a lot. So let me tell you this. We gonna solve the issue, bring them all to the retreat, and I want Luke to come too. Douglas now, I want all of them to be there, and see how this budget process works.
All right.
Because we want to be on top of the table, not under. Then I think that'll solve all the issue, and, and it'll be just one meeting, and we'll know.
Or if you feel like you wouldn't schedule one after that, let, let me do that.
Yeah.
We got, you know, but I think, like, say, if you bring all them in there at that meeting, that's a little bit more above board and, uh.
Yeah, a little bit.
I think that'd work better. I think that's a good idea.
All right.
Mr. Carol?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, the, uh, one thing that I do want to address is the, because I think it, it's, it's felt throughout the system, and I, I've mentioned this, when we talk about morale, the climate, why would anybody be afraid for any of us to be in a meeting is beyond me. Why should anybody in this school system be afraid if you walk in their classroom, or their administrator walks in their classroom? There's something wrong with that picture. I understand the feeling of, of a, uh, you're my boss and, you know, that kind of thing, but it's bigger than that. And I, I think, you know, whatever it takes, I've been saying it clear, this, this system has got to get their cl- the climate better. The us against them feeling this, you know, it's at the county off, it's always them at the county office, or it's them at this school or something. It's, it's just, it, it, it's just.
Well, and, and to say, the, I think that if you read the Saks reports going back over the last five years, we've improved that. And that, that there's document evidence that's improved.
But it's still, if it was good, if it was good, you wouldn't have said what you said. Any of us walk in that room, why, who would care? I mean, they just, they should be able to just keep on talking just as if we weren't there, honestly. And the same thing between us and them, from the school system to this, to the people that work at this, at this building. It should, it shouldn't be like that. And, and that is really something that concerns me, and I believe that each one of you will tell, have people that will tell you the same. It's just, um, I don't care if we go to the meeting or not. I don't, I don't want to go to all those meetings because it's, it's too many, number one, and it, and I, and I have that feeling that, you know, I just want to be able to, I, I want to understand it. And I want to be able to, and I think when the, when the, when the people come, the directors come, and we, we can ask them those kind of questions without having to attend their meeting. That's, that's not a problem. But the bigger problem to me right now is, is that, is this, you know, I'm gonna be afraid if you're in my room. No, why would you be afraid? That's, that's just, that's senseless.
My thoughts on that, we're not, and, and I'm like, I don't, I don't think anything about it, being a board member, being bought to them somewhere. Because I don't have the intention. But we, and, and that's something we discussed a lot, and I was talking about the board chair workshop last year. That's something we discussed a lot about, sometimes you don't think that what you're doing, because your intentions aren't that way, but it's how they're perceived. And that's something I had to kind of fast track last year a little bit about. And I don't just be bought up to the schools as much as I used to. I make sure I'm going to a governing council meeting, I'm going to this, I'm going to that, you know? And it wasn't that I felt like I was going in there trying to do something, but what they're talking about is how to perceive, and how people look at it. I agree with you.
And it's shit that.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's where all that comes from. I'm like you, I just, I, I can't, I came one day to get something from somebody, and I think it's Dr. Banks, and he had a paper, and he said, I walked around, sat down in his office, and then, you know, Dr. Lee comes in a few minutes, I'm like, did we think about how it looks? But it looks like I've been bought, but, you know, just came in here, have a meeting with you. Uh, so I've had to start thinking about, and that's what we're getting at, just as much as how they perceive what you're doing is what you do. And I'm not saying I agree with it, but that's the rule we're living by right now.
It's just, yeah, but it just, it, it's, it's something that we can work on.
And, and that comes, well, like, say, trust and everything, but it's, it's, I mean, that's not something.
Maybe that's, that's, that's a good word. I think it's lack of trust.
Something's gonna come overnight, is what I'm saying.
That's a, that's a, that's the essential word.
It never worked for me, Mr. Lot. Excuse me, Mr. Lot. You know what worked for me? When I went to visit a school, you know who I told? Mr. Robin. If I can't get him, that's Dr. Lee, so and so and so, I want you to go with me. Because I might want to go and try to fool out. I might want to go see his building clean. I might want to just look, see what's happening, but I have him with me.
As far as, yeah.
And get him to become a micromanager, because I don't want that.
And that's what we're talking about. You know, we don't feel like we should have to do that, but really we do, because of how it's perceived.
You don't, you don't, a board member lets you sit in here.
I'm just saying, that's.
You're not the regular citizen.
It just works better, though. You don't have that, you know, what he's doing, that's what he's doing, that, if you're going back like we're talking about. I'm not saying we're doing anything wrong. I'm saying that's how they're gonna perceive that.
Yeah, you right.
Oh.
I think we still within the guidelines, and don't tell us what House Bill ninety-two or eighty-four, what we can do and what we can't do. We in our guidelines, now, we board members sitting around.
That's right.
So we telling you, have that March fifth retreat.
Yes, sir.
Be prepared for a longer date with some good food.
And, and we're gonna get it there for y'all, and y'all are gonna be a part of it, and certainly I hope it satisfies y'all's desire. And like Mr. Jow said, if we have to have another, we'll have another.
We got, see, that, that, we handled it by discussing.
That's right.
We came to a, a resolution, so let's move on.
Mr. Jow, just a, a, could I mention something?
Yes.
I've watched this evolve since class year. And in my humble opinion, and having watched the board, and not being critical of administration or anything, are Mr. Lot's point, and Mr. uh, Preston's point about Senate Bill eighty-four, crossing the line of micromanaging, micromanaging way before the board was ever accused of micromanaging and getting in trouble with Saks. But when Mr. Johnson and Mr. Jowers were on the board, one year, Superintendent Willman decided to get real detailed on developing the budget. And they had Mr. Evans come up there, and they had principals, every one of them came, they had every department come up and present everything. And that, when Mr. Jowers comes on last year, and this, this is my perspective, I share it for the benefit of the board. Mr. Jowers comes on last year, and I'm not arguing with what Mr. Preston said about the board had everything in front of it last June, I mean, last spring. But all of a sudden, from Mr. Jowers in, and I've not talked to him, all of a sudden they said, we're passing the budget tonight. Because it has to, yes, we need to get it in. Remember that night? And then at the next meeting was the retreat, when it was discussed, and there, the on-hand involvement, brought, we're gonna be at the table. And it was primarily that these two are contrasting it where we were probably overly involved, uh, very overly involved, it got real detailed.
We were out of money back then. We had.
Money, well, at that point, that was the issue, but it was to where the board, from your perspective, it seemed to me, had no involvement. We got to pass it. When a superintendent or apartment head has a meeting with somebody, you know, you don't necessarily want everybody in there, and it's a chilling factor to have a board meeting, like, sometimes it's a chilling factor to have somebody bring you a lawyer, or the other side doesn't have his lawyer. To go and have a, the, for him to do a lot of the work, when those principals would come, Mr. Jowers, it wasn't necessarily just out of money. It was also, they would come with them, they would present the wish lists, and say, oh, no, we got to have this, and the board is very difficult to say, oh, no, you're saying you're gonna have this, we're not gonna approve everything. And then Mike Willman would come back, and really looked like he was being bad, and say, oh, no, you're gonna go from, uh, not a, a, a cockier, and have kid cockiers, you're gonna have to go to six cockiers. He came on, and y'all know this, and through attrition, and with his assistance and guidance, the budget's gotten, uh, good. And it's been proven. Uh, and at this time, the governor, Donald Sutter, seemed like he cared about education, but he cut it down, but to go up there and say that he can't, it seemed to me, again. So he had department heads and say, now, Ms. Clayton, you've got four people. You've got to do more for less, because we might not get this money that Governor Deal said is coming. And you go to the, to, he goes to the schools, as he's told me, and talking about Dr. Lee's, and said, listen, you don't get but, uh, fourteen people this year. You know, you come up and tell me, now, that being in front of your school, you're gonna say, oh, no. Your school, you know, he's got to do a lot of preliminary to get it primed. And, and to face it, like, you can't do a budget. So, but my point is, it, the pendulum swings back and forth, and I saw this coming when last year, you said, they say, no, best way next year, we, we want to be involved. And so the involvement to come back, and then you presented tonight, say, oh, we're gonna have it, can we be there? Oh, no, huh, no, 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 no. And, what, you know, because really, you, it's inappropriate, but it's, it's a matter of balance. It is a chilling factor to have a board member in there, and also, not necessarily a chilling factor. I don't have a right to go in there. He's got a right to sit there and tell, tell Ms. Clayton, tell Ms. Evans, here's what your department needs to do. Uh, the board's not satisfied with this, and then Mr. World comes up, no, I think this needs to be done. No, you're, you're here just as an individual, just your, your opinion. So, yes, there's a lot of budget stuff to get ready, and then bring it, and then, Dr. Lee's what happened, in my opinion, last year. The board didn't get a, an option, I mean, an opportunity to have any input. It was voted up, voted down.
Yeah.
And so then we go to the other thing, now we're gonna be involved in every state. So there's got to be a happy meeting, and, and a, a prize. Yes, everything, you don't, you shouldn't, Mr. Johnson, have to vote up for sixty-two billion dollar thing. You ought to be able to vote it and decide on the pieces, and bring this up, here's what we need. And Dr. Lee say, listen, you know, we got, how many teachers?
Six hundred and sixty.
We're, uh, we're, we're gonna be able to give an increase this year or not give an increase. We're gonna need to be doing this at Georgia. But to say that the board, it probably is getting a little, the law remains before Senate Bill eighty-four, is a management and control of, of the school system with, with the Board of Education. And the, where the problem came up is when superintendent will sit there and say, oh, my board member wants to do everything. And the other side, board members find out, it appeared to be last year, that on the budget, we don't know anything. They don't want us to have any involvement. And that, so, Senate Bill kind of eighty-four kind of was a back, the law remains, y'all have the ultimate vote, the ultimate decision. You're not supposed to micromanage. We get in bad trouble by micromanaging on, on Saks. But this is really, the, the involvement needs to be there, but y'all have got to give him the opportunity, it would seem to me, to manage and, and get this thing under control before he brings it to you. And then you've got, whether that's one meeting or ten meetings, and like you say, works, uh, retreat. And, and, and Mr. Johnson, when Mr. Preston was talking, Mr. Robert brought him up and whispered in my ear, you go up to and say, you know, y'all have a right to come to any of these staff meetings. And all of a sudden, three of them come up, there y'all got a court.
Down board.
Uh, you know, and so, whoa, we gotta, gotta have reasons for why we didn't get twenty-four hour notice. But, but he's, he's got to be able to sit down with his people, and it's not just because it's personnel, it's not just because it's property. It's just because to develop the budget and tell them, I'm gonna be able to give you another person this year, or you gotta justify it.
Yes, sir.
He can do that, and we trying to stop him from doing his job, but we have a job to do, too. And if we came to a resolution, that's how we're gonna do it at the retreat.
And I think, and I think this, uh, part of all of that, anyway, I think we did realize last year, and, and I said before, I'm still learning. I mean, I've been here three years, I'm still learning stuff. You know, I didn't realize that we probably did more say-so in book to Mr. Jowers talking about. Maybe they had too much, maybe we didn't have enough, and that's what we're trying to get to here. That's what we're trying to, we're trying to find a way to get in that happy meeting where we got enough say-so in what we're doing, but not go over the line in something we shouldn't be doing. And I think that would be, I mean, if we have a meeting like that, and they come and present to us, it's not, it's a public meeting, it's not being in all those individual meetings with them, I think that solves a lot of those issues. Would you not?
Yeah, I think, I think.
So he could do all these things, too, but they gonna come, he could meet and all that, and get everything ready.
Yeah.
And meet with his principals and, and. And meet with his principals and, and tell them, right.
And that's what we're saying. And this is all come to the retreat and go over it with us.
And then if we don't like so, we'll take a recess until you. And not at that meeting, but at another meeting.
Just excuse him, Mr. Johnson. You just ask him to be excused.
Yeah. See, it works out.
Get some personnel manner and go with it.
My concern is I just don't want to see divisive, divisive things that can come from that. And the reason I sided the SACS and the reason I sided the past was because I think we all understand how serious the issues in the past were. And, and we just don't wanna have that, even if it's not what's going on. We don't want it to be perceived that that's what's going on. So that's the only reason I brought that up.
I don't wanna see us collapsing the structure of that, right?
That's right.
I got more kids than I can get in a classroom.
Correct.
Another type of classes that may not have four or six or maybe ten in them.
Right.
And if we collapse, angry class. And they're thirty-two or thirty-three in that. That's what I don't wanna see.
Yes, sir.
I agree with you. Now, Dr. Leece, let me tell you, in my opinion, we're not trying to tell you how to do your job. But we are, I am telling you tonight, before that budget be approved and we in the board, we'll be known.
Yes, sir. I wanna hear that live clear.
I want you to know, you gonna stay in our seat, you stay yours, and everybody stay in their seat. But we gonna have something to say about the budget.
That's right.
That's all I'm saying.
Well, you understand the budget before you're asked to vote on the whole thing. You will have been involved.
That's right. Also, I wanna say, Mr. Chairman, our principals and our directors, I have full confidence that they are not afraid of us. I need to speak freely amongst us and everybody know what's on the table. I'm not gonna say we don't need this. I'm not gonna say nothing to them. I'm gonna say to you.
Yeah.
Right there in your office.
Well, I agree. I agree.
And I'm not trying to, I don't, I'm in full support, a hundred percent, for the people that work with this board system. You understand?
Yes, sir.
If they say, Mr. Johnson, we want some bananas on top of our bill, then I'm gonna vote, we put some bananas on top of that bill. All they gotta do is ask. It's for the chairman.
Yes, sir.
Not for grown people. You understand?
That's right.
Okay. That's where I stand. And I appreciate if everybody listening.
Yes, sir.
We came to a resolution. See how easy that was?
That's good boardmanship.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Travis, carry on.
He's got a real laugh.
We don't know too.
Around April, you know, we'll start looking at our projections as far as local, state revenues. And we'll be a ways away, I think, from having any firm numbers at that point in time. Mainly because we generally don't get that tax digest until July from the county. That's about the earliest we'll see that. But we'll, we'll have to rely on kind of existing information and talking with the tax commissioner, tax assessor, and county officials to find out where that, that's gonna come in at. There's some other pieces to local that, you know, we'll, we'll gather as well. State revenues, obviously, it's gonna be just a matter of keeping your finger on the pulse of what the legislative officials are doing and what the governor is doing. That, that budget generally doesn't get actually signed until sometime in June. But we can still have a pretty good idea with the help of the state Department of Education as far as where we think we're gonna be at that point in time. And, and they're pretty good about feeding that information to us that we'll, we'll probably have a pretty good idea of the state revenues at that point. And, and, you know, those kinds of things we'll be reporting to you as well during these work sessions or these meetings that we have intermittently. We then move on into the May timeframe. And this is when we're gonna wanna present a tentative budget to the board. That's not something to vote on at that point in time. That's something that we, you know, we've kinda all digested over several months. And, and this budget process, frankly, in the eleven-plus years between this system and the previous system I was with, it's an education process every year because frankly, the goal keeps getting moved on. So it's a matter of understanding what this, what the state's doing and how they're doing it in terms of revenues, in terms of what they're gonna be putting on our backs in terms of additional expenditures that might be coming down like the, the health insurance premium I talked about earlier when we were talking about our, our financial results. So just understand that, again, as I said on my first slide, this is a bit of, of science and balancing, but it's a bit of art as well in the process. And I guess, you know, it's gonna, you're gonna get a pretty good idea of what kind of teacher we, we're gonna, you know, work out to be as far as instructing you in this budget process. Finally, late May, we'll go through and pass that the board after that tentative budget is advertised for the final budget approval. Now, that's about a month ahead of when we actually have to have it passed. But we do like to have that June timeframe to load in the budget and make sure that all the numbers check out and that nothing has changed when we get it loaded into our financial system. So we'll be asking for that vote at that, sometime during the week of that, May twenty-third to twenty-sixth. Your normal board meeting, I think, is early May seventh or thereabouts. When you'll be approving- Where, before you'll be-
May twelfth.
May twelfth, where you'll be approving personnel, a large roster of personnel at that time. But we typically have had a call meeting near the end of May when we typically have our board meetings to, to pass this final budget at that point in time. And then June, as I said, we'll be uploading and inputting all the data related to all the personnel and all the line items like fuel, parts, repairs and maintenance, supplies, coffee, and equipment. And then finally, in that July and August timeframe, we'll actually get information from the county on the tax digest. We'll understand a much clearer picture of what our tax dollars, our local tax dollars are gonna be coming in. And we'll advertise that digest as we always do with a five-year history and then request that you approve that with the millage rate as well.
Oh, really? Holy rest of it. In my opinion, we not raising taxes.
Well, I didn't say-
I didn't say raise. I know what you said, millage. I can read it.
Yeah.
I ain't gonna talk about millage.
Well, the millage, even if we give you the same millage or we roll back millage like we have the past two years-
That's what you talking about.
That's what I'm talking about. We, we have to still put that in front of you to vote, to roll it back, or to leave it the same.
Leave it like it is. I'm not in favor of leaving it that way.
And hopefully we can take the roll back if we have to.
That's what we gonna do.
The governor puts his money back in. We have rolled back taxes two years in a row.
So keep rolling it. Because people don't have no money like they used to.
That's right.
And I'm not gonna tax them to death or roll the millage up. I said, when Mr. Jowers was here last time, we talking about raising taxes. I said, "Then, if you go back and check the record," and I said, "Again, if we roll them up to twenty mils then, it'd been twenty mils. No, you can't go over twenty. Am I right, Senator?"
Yes, sir. That's right.
See? If we, if we'd have done it eight years ago, we wouldn't be talking about it. We, we broke. I ain't got no money. We not broke, but we'd have had a lot of money.
You wouldn't be here, Mr. Johnson.
I know. Nobody else would be here. Because everybody was voting for it. They gone.
You gotta have that millage burden if you cut it in half.
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm just telling you where I stand, in the graveyard.
Okay. Well, I think we all agree we've got a conservative board in that regard. And so, you know, we'll continue that.
I understand, Mike.
Yeah. That millage rate has to be advertised, whether it's being left the same or it's being dropped or rolled back, as they say. And we, we do that in late July, early August. And then at our, sometime we have a call meeting during August to approve that digest and that. And then that's put forward to the county commission. Because they have to vote on it as well at that point in time. So.
I'm beginning to love everybody up there. Because we're gonna work together. That's what I'm looking for. Love, communication, just like being mayor. Talking.
All right.
Don't be scared to talk neither.
That's teamwork.
That's right. Talk.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir. All right, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen calendar proposals. Dr. Evans has been working on some proposals. We wanted to bring this before the board, before anyone else works with this. Dr. Evans, you wanna describe what we've got?
If I could just give a little background on how the calendars are built. There, there's a lot that has to be considered when we put together our calendar options. Behind each of these proposals, I have a year-long actual calendar with days numbered to get in the hundred and eighty days. We also have to consider testing, and we kinda have to work around some of the testing requirements. But what you have before you is three options for first semester and three options for second semester. And I've pointed out some similarities and some differences that you'll be interested in. I tried to highlight the significant differences in blue. But if you look at the first semester A, B, C option, the similarities in that is that they all have a four-day weekend, fall break, October fourteenth and seventeenth. They all have about the same start date for students, either August second or August third. And there's a holiday after the parent-teacher conference on all three of those options being October thirteenth. There are differences in the three calendars for first semester in that the first two options, A and B, have five pre-planning days. And option C has three pre-planning days with the other two days dropped down there on October seventh and November twenty-eighth. That's just another option. And then in option B, the Thanksgiving break is different with a three-day Thanksgiving break in B, and the A and C have the five-day Thanksgiving break. They all end on December, oh, I'm sorry. The option C runs into the Christmas break, runs into December the twentieth, which is the Tuesday of the Christmas week, rather than ending the Friday before. That's because of those two other days sprinkled in there. We've got, you know, we have to make it up there at the end on that option. Then if you look at semester, the second semester, option D, E, and F, and once we decide that the proposals are okay, what we wanna have prepared is a, this will go out to all users and they'll be able to select, select a semester one option and a semester two option. So for example, a teacher might select option A first semester and option F second semester. Or they may select B and D, or C and E, or C and F. You know, they pick one from the top and one from the bottom to be able to build the calendar. The first semester has ninety-one days built in. The second semester and all three options has eighty-nine days. The reason for that being so that we could keep the February four-day weekend around President's Holiday and all three of those options. And so it's just hard to, to make the ninety days there and still end on Friday, as they all do. But looking at the second semester, the similarities, the start date is about the same for all the students. The President's Holiday weekend is the same and all. And the differences in the second semester in option F, there is no holiday after the parent-teacher conference. Also, the spring break is different weeks. They're both five days, but they're just different weeks. Just to give options. And the GMASS test is given in there. And we have to have a good, clean, ten-day window to give that test.
Where in Willoughby?
Uh, we don't know. We know when the window is, but we haven't set the date for the actual test. That'll depend on the calendar. Teachers typically like to get in as much instruction as they can before that test. And then we also like to try to take the test as, as early as possible so that we can get the scores back. Hopefully this year we will.
I'm having a senior moment. I can't think of what the terminology is literary-wise, but the alphabet, so. You can call it Jordan Milestones. So, well, I know what the test is.
I'm okay.
That's fine. I know y'all, I know y'all talk so much all day long that you wanna shorten up the words, but no, it's fine. But that's, but that's the Jordan Milestones.
That's it. Right. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm looking for that.
Thank you, Senator. I have two concerns.
We need to get the governor council. We need to get, Mr. Evans, we need to get, everyone to go council. Governor council. We discuss this with them. You get it, Dr. Leece?
No, this is just a first presentation to y'all. Then we're gonna send it to the principals and have them discuss it with their governor council. So we wanted y'all to see it first. And if there's any changes you wanna recommend to it, we can recommend it tonight before we do anything.
So, you know, we talked about it in the retreat, getting moving the school from August the seventh to a later date. What we had on that?
I, I would like to speak on that.
We look at it.
I would like to speak on that. And I think it's, when I say the earlier date or the later date, when I counted up the number of days out of school for various holidays, conferences, things like that, out of the entire school year, there are twenty-seven days out of school.
For the out-of-year.
We didn't used to do that. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't have the number of federal holidays. We didn't have the number of, we didn't have parent-teacher conferences like we did. We, we didn't do a lot of things. We didn't get off Thanksgiving. We got off Thanksgiving on Wednesday. We, we didn't have a whole week. That was fairly new development. We didn't have, we didn't used to have a whole week at spring break. That's a fairly new development. That was Easter weekend. We had the Friday Monday, good Friday off, and you had Monday. There's just a lot, there's, there's a lot of days that are, look, five days is a week. And all of a sudden, you're a week. But in reality, it's nine days because there's a weekend bracket on each. So.
Well, we can build pretty much any option.
It's just a difficult thing to shift the calendar around and have it also line up with our wire graphs, have it line up with college, have it line up with expectations of business that are around. I mean, it's, it's a difficult proposition. I don't envy you in terms of calendar, but I just did that number the other day.
It is difficult. I'll attest to that.
That once we start school, we take twenty-seven days out of the calendar for various reasons. And a lot of them, you know, fairly mandatory, but.
And then we push back.
Ms. World?
Um, I don't have a problem with our, the breaks. They need them. The kids need them. The teachers need them. I'm not worried about breaks.
I'm just pointing that out.
I am concerned because this is the fourth year, going through my fourth year now, asking for Veterans Day to be recognized as a holiday, as it should be for our military. And I still don't see it. And I know I'm adding another holiday or, of course, maybe take one off to somewhere else. But I just, for the life of me, I've heard people say, "Oh, well, they do things at the schools." No, they don't. Some do, but not every class has something. And they can do it the day before. But Veterans Day needs to be recognized.
And also, also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see us push starting from August the seventh to at least August the tenth. People have to get out their crop bapping and cotton and peanuts. They got machines to do that now. It's important to get our test scores back up. It's more important to, like Mr. Preston said, cut some of them holidays- It's more important to, like Mr. Wilson said, cut some of them holidays out.
Well, I didn't say we cut them out, I just pointed out how many days we take during the regular school year.
I say cut them out, it's just too many.
I didn't say, I didn't.
One raises.
Take the twenty-seven to, shouldn't we, Mr. Evans, from twenty-seven to twenty? How are we gonna do that? And listen.
Easy.
It's easy to do it. I'm just telling you.
Hard to swallow. I'm taking notes.
Hard to swallow. Huh? What you said, Doc?
I said, I'm taking notes, I wrote down President's Day holiday, we'll create some, an option and, and then start after August tenth, we can look at it if we come.
I agree with you, it needs to start later.
Second semester E, please break for part three day. Still have a gap in there between the. Moving a little later than March, from twenty-fourth.
Yeah, it might not.
They were having decent weather.
It might not get to be winter time until about March this year.
Well, that's not, it's on April and the other two options, it is later.
That should get a little bit false.
Well, we have the G, the milestones.
Well, that's what I was gonna.
That has fallen there.
That's what I was gonna say, I, I learned early on that the calendar's calendar, let's pick your butt off and let's stay awake. But, but what I'm getting, we, we had one first governor council meeting we had one time, the, all the representatives coming, the first thing they wanna talk about was calendar and all the issues we've got up here, all, you know, let's start later, let's do that. And when they went through all the different testing days and when they needed this, and lab, and teachers needed so many days before this, once it was all laid out, there were very, very few options to shift that calendar around. It sounds easy to do until you get to looking at all the dates, which we're not doing right now. You know, so, you know, I, I don't know how much you can do. I agree with all, you know, what I'd like to do, but I think when you start picking around all the different things they have to deal around, you limit the options.
I think if you don't.
You have to, you have to finish first semester before Christmas because the window for the end-of-course test for high school students is November twenty-eighth through January the sixth. So you don't want them coming back to school on January the fourth and sitting down and taking an end-of-course test.
There's not a second window.
These are the days that I don't see Dr. Perrin in here, but that, that's the date that we have for the end-of-course test.
There's only one window, one window that I'm aware of.
We'll take this note about looking, when we can do another option and put it out there.
Another reason that high school folks have told us in the past that we need to finish first semester before Christmas break is the turnaround in schedules. Seeing who, which students maybe didn't pass the course, that need to be rescheduled to take the test. We got some high school folks here that, that might could allude to that, they need those.
They look very antsy, like they wanna say something else to you.
They need those few days to be able to, to take tally on where their students are so that they can reschedule and get them into appropriate courses for the next semester. Some of them may have to retake courses.
Mr. Johnson? I do think it's also important to consider students who transfer in and out, we do have a lot of students that transfer in and out of our system. And if we don't close the semester until after the Christmas break, issuing those students' credits becomes very difficult, and then they transfer to a system with, with zero credits from their first semester of high school. Also, bringing students in that start our school in January don't have new courses to begin until two or three or four weeks into the semester. It, it gets a little bit difficult when we're on a different schedule in our surrounding counties.
All right, let me, let me, uh, folks.
Okay, so I'm looking at adding Veterans Day as an option.
Yeah, we'll do another, we'll do another option, we'll have an option, uh, D and, anyways, we'll prepare another one and get it out to everybody.
All right.
All right.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
All right, the last item on the agenda for the work session is elementary scheduling. Mr. Johnson, you called them, wanna displace on the agenda, talk about the elementary start times, elementary scheduling. And the concern that was raised in meetings, the early morning, and I think you cited that last month in our last meeting, the, the early.
I had a lot of parents talking to me about pay through five, the starting time. The kids have to get up at five-thirty, five o'clock to get ready, stand out there in the rain and the cold at six-thirty, and there's no designated spot for those kids to be out there at that time of day, morning. So, in my opinion, I think elementary school should start at eight o'clock. Kids shouldn't have to get up early. And you ask the bus driver, they probably tell you the same thing, cause it's dangerous out there, especially at this time, with this, uh, daylight saving time, you get dark early, and it's still down at six-thirty. So I'm asking the board to consider, just talking to them, let's start elementary school at eight o'clock. I ain't saying nothing, but just discussing. I think it's too early. Mr. Johnson wants a bus driver, ask someone to get, one time he gotta get up to go get them.
They're gonna get up about six-thirty to go get them, instead of picking them up at six o'clock.
I go to dialysis every, uh, every three days a week, and the bus that pick the kids up at Prigge, I meet them every morning around about five forty-five.
They're gonna have to leave home.
Yeah, they have to leave home to get them, but that, that ain't, that's the advantage that kids ride a bus and they can use the same thing. That's too early, Doc.
I think it's something we certainly need to study and, and sure we can, through the way we can do so.
I'd like to see it pushed back, eight o'clock, the old way.
It might be something you wanna discuss with the, uh, principals at the elementary schools and see how they could work it, or, you know, if they see if they're, I, I hear, you know, different things, and some, some people say their kids are really, you know, still asleep when they're getting there to the.
So they have to wake them up and like, throw them out of the car.
I know, yeah.
I, I think everybody, everybody likes it done, now how we, you know, I think, I, I think transportation's gonna be a big issue.
Well, it would push, it would push the day.
Push everything back.
I see that middle school start at eight fifteen, high school at eight thirty.
Well, we'll study it and come back to board with, with what we found and.
And also, Mr. Lot, I'd like to see the board direct Mr. Cunningham on the land on those limits until we put a bus stop with cover, shelter. As soon as we get the Egress on that property, for those kids to stand under that bus shelter. Now, when it's raining, they standing in the rain.
It could be in the roadway, so we get it from the county.
Whatever you have to do, I think we need to get on that and stay on it, until we get some ounces. And I ain't come for no voting, I, I came for discussion.
Yes, sir.
Cause our little kids is being tortured in that work. If anybody think of mine, get out your bed around six, seven, or eight, you see it for yourself.
Yes, sir.
Better have some good eyes, but if they got on dark clothes, you gonna get one or two. I appreciate the board listening.
Yes, sir, we'll study and get back in the office. All right? Was there any audience?
I ain't home. Very bad. You better.
We're in a short break. Oh, we made a different session.
So, we got ten minutes.
We can, we can do that later, yeah, let's just stay in short break here this week. Is there any public participation?
That's fine.
All right. Yeah, listen, there are most of the term this portion.